Mario, would you offer the prayer before we start this meeting tonight?
Thank you, Father. Heavenly Father, we just ask from this evening, it is an honor to share the Council, the seat of decisions, Lord, and we pray that you're with us, alive in our hearts, Lord, to lead this community and we also just lift up the family that is hurt, Father, for their little girl. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mario. Before we get to that, everybody look at the agenda. We want to table number...
Six.
Six, the vector of repair equipment. It's not going to be as much as we thought it was. So we won't need to approve that, Lord, we'll just sign off on it. I'm going to take a motion to... Okay. Okay, I'm going to take a motion to... Well, we'll call the meeting to order. 6:03 a.m., sorry about that. Roll call. Trying to jump ahead and I'm the dog that's playing tonight.
Mayor Hicks.
Present.
Uncle Reynolds.
Here.
Uncle Vasquez.
Here.
Uncle Usterro.
Here.
Uncle Pia.
Here.
And please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Trying to get ahead of myself. The pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay, now, the agenda. Now, finally, the agenda. Removing number six, so we're going to take a motion to approve the agenda.
Make the motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Uncle Vasquez. Uncle Usterro. Uncle Paliya.
Yes.
Okay. You want to talk when the item comes up, Harry?
Excuse me, sir.
You want to talk when the item comes up?
Yeah.
You got it. First one, public comment on our charter compliance. Anybody out there want to tell us we're not in compliance? I'll tell us we're not in compliance. I didn't see any corrections on the minutes. Is it anybody else? I'll approve of... Intervene a motion for approval of the minutes for 9/17.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second.
Uncle Reynolds?
Yes.
Uncle Vasquez?
Yes.
Uncle Usterro?
Yes.
Uncle Paliya?
Final audit review, Laura, you're going to handle this one.
Kimberly's here.
Kimberly, there you go.
That's why I'm here.
The CPA. Sorry about that.
So you guys all got this big packet and I tagged the two pages that are most important out of the whole thing. So page three is the first one. And so this is our fiscal year '17 audit. That even though it was late and there were lots of issues, we worked through a lot of stuff since I started and we were able to get what's called a qualified opinion, which is what you see on page three that I highlighted. We can, it's modified, though. So that means we did have some issues and we had talked about them earlier this year, so I don't think we need to go over them again. Got the cash balance after 18 months of not being balanced. Got several other things taken care of. Our fixed assets is still an issue because it's a huge issue. I mean, you know, $20, $50 million in fixed assets is going to take a long time for us to make sure that we get where we need to be. But a qualified opinion is very good. The only better one would have been if it would have been unmodified completely. Before we skip to the next page, just as a clarification on this. So we started our fiscal year '18 audit today, actually. The auditors showed up first thing this morning. They'll be here for four days this week. They'll be here for four days in November and four days in December so that we will get this done by the deadline in December. Just as a heads up, we will probably give another finding on our fixed assets, but this new audit firm is going to help us in getting where we need to be. We have already started working on it. In finance, we started working on it since Shay has started. She is helping us. We have, I don't know, 25 different lists. And that may be an underexaggeration, quite honestly. And we're trying to get them all together. And then once we get them all together and verified, then we're turning to the auditors. Because like, we know we don't have some stuff, but I don't know what the heck to do with it. I don't know what the procedure is to take it off our books. That's part of what they're going to help us with, get that, get some stuff cleaned up so that by the time next year's audit comes around, our fixed assets should be in a really good situation. It's not a bad thing, it's just, it's not as good as it could be.
I'll take care of it.
Yeah, so. So on that note, then you need to turn to page six. And obviously, if you have any other questions, I'll answer them, but these are the two basic things.
We'll do the questions at the end.
Okay.
Go ahead, do your thing.
So on page six, I have, I highlighted for you guys. Basically, it's just showing the net position change. So at the beginning of the year... So at the beginning of the year, we basically had $70,980,000. Was our, it was our everything. It was our assets, it was our cash, it was our everything. By the end of the year, we had gone up to $72,242,740. So that's a good thing. That means that we're growing, is what that means. So that's really the most, the most important two things to take out of it. The findings are at the end, if anybody wants to review those again. Like I said, they're the ones that we've talked about a couple of council meetings already, so...
You know, and when I found, when I found in reading the findings in the back, they're, they're almost like a lawyer's paper.
And actually, you know, when I first, I had to respond to them, so the, it says manager's response, that's me. And I'm like, I don't know what the heck to do.
Yeah, it's like a lawyer's paper.
And I said, what does this even mean? And it is. It's the audit rolls from the state auditor and they write... And it's like, even on page three, I said, why don't you just put that we got, the opinion that we got? Why do I have to try to figure it out? And it is, it's all just rhetoric.
Question from the Council, Sidney.
I only had, I only had one. On page one, there's five elected officials. Did anyone notice?
And the reason they do that is because they have to take who was the officials at the, as of June.
But they're, they're not quite, they're not quite right, though.
What? But it's the people...
He didn't, he didn't come on here. Yeah.
Okay, that I don't know. It's the people who were here.
Michael Pintana has been here for four years.
Yikes.
Okay.
Okay.
Hicks, Pintana, Vasquez, Lewis, Usterro, and Reynolds.
Mike Lewis has not been here for...
No, he was only...
No, he was here because this is as of June 30th, 2017.
I was here, Vasquez was here. Yeah, Pintana was not here.
Well, I wasn't here either, so...
So consequently, I was a little bit...
Pintana, who was in the last seat there, Ruben?
Well, and then Martin, Mr. Dickens was also. And he's, I think he should have been the one who was on here. They copied from...
They, I don't think they look at just the end of the fiscal year. I think they look at the whole fiscal year, so that might be why Michael Pintana is still listed.
Michael Pintana's been on for four years.
Isn't that long?
Three years.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Yeah.
Well, it's done and over with and been removed by the OSA. So, but, but I will make sure that doesn't happen this year's audit. I will make sure it's the correct people as of June 30th, 2018.
Yeah, there were more than two.
Yep.
This is it.
This is it.
This is it. I will make sure that that's correct.
I, I've seen several other mistakes they made too, so...
I didn't feel confident when I was eight one, I saw the big error.
Yeah, well, the first page is about error. Well, then, when you start looking and the numbers, when you get back in there, the numbers don't add.
And I'll tell you this, I know it's their job and it's their livelihood and they're professionals and stuff, but think of, think of you walking into, you know, Smith's and saying, let me audit everything you do, how you buy food and everything that you do about it. I mean, it would be Greek to you, to a point. And so you need to realize that. I mean, there are over 500 entities in the state of New Mexico, county, city, municipalities, and special interests like water conservation group or water, soil and water groups that they have to audit. And there's a select few that are, that are qualified to do that. And I'm not excusing them, I'm just saying, seeing what they do and the amount... You should see the amount of work that I've given them just today. I mean, if I were to stack it up, I'm betting it's this high. And they're going to be back three more weeks. And that's just one time. And they have got to look through that, they've got to understand our procedures, they've got to figure out how we do things and then try to make sense of it. And I'm, like I said, I'm not excusing them, I just... It's amazing to me that this, we ever even get to this point, quite honestly.
They had staff turnover as well and then pretty much started over at some point to see...
Yeah, they started over in May.
That was after they met with you for the exit conference and then it was like, started from ground zero.
Started over again.
Needless to say, we are not using the same company again. But neat that's, you know...
Manny?
Maybe they can discuss that with you and put it in plain English.
Right.
I don't know, some of it's above my head too, but yeah.
Put it in layman's terms.
Yeah. Every day, so everybody can understand it.
And quite honestly, you know, me being here now this amount of time, you know, my level of knowledge has just increased in the whole government side of things. And so I'm much better prepared and been able to ask questions and things like that. So hopefully, yeah, we will have a better, a better understanding of everything. And then hoping we will be doing our exit conference in January would be my guess, so...
I'm so thankful Kimberly's here because for the last three years, I've had to spend hours and hours reading these to try to explain it to you all and answer any questions. So I guess I'm Kimberly now.
On you.
And you know it's nice, though. Because Kimberly knows what the hell she's doing.
Most of the time, most of the time, right here.
Rick, you got any questions?
No, it just looks like you've done a great job of putting this all together.
Rick?
Assuring that we all have a pretty good plan just over here. So, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I entertain a motion to accept the audit. I'm not changing, I'm going to accept it.
Make a motion to accept the audit.
Second.
Looks like...
Uncle Reynolds?
Yes.
Uncle Vasquez?
Yes.
Uncle Paliya?
Yes.
Thank you very much for what you do. I appreciate you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Mr. Teshama, tell us about the LED lighting.
Very good. Mayor, Council, City Manager. So I was approached by the member of the Lodger's Tax Board about spending some extra money they had. They were interested in doing some lighting on the east end of town. I got the quote from Continental Divide Electric to use six existing poles, add two other poles, so there would be proper lighting from close to Taco Bell, wrapping around all the way to Walmart. That cost comes out to the number you see in option A, $14,180.38. And so the, the other options, we've, we've talked about them off, off record and we'd like to present those at a, at a different time. And so option A, to release some Lodger's Tax Board money so we could get some lighting around Naomi and Vicky here.
And the reason we're waiting, so everybody on the Council knows to move further with this project, is that PRC has not approved the light, the lights that we're going to do and move on this stuff, okay? We're waiting on the PRC and Continental Divide to go ahead and do their thing so that we can move forward. Once we get things from the PRC, I'd like to see that hole east of the town done and lit up with brand new LEDs. Because like he said, this little chunk right here is only going from Walmart around to Taco Bell for all the people from the motel, so they can see walking over there, okay? And the reason we presented it this way is because the PRC isn't ready for anything else yet. They should be within 90 days, guys. Just so you know, it'll be, this will come back in 90 days, as soon as we get the PRC open.
What kind of approval are you waiting for and what are you approving?
The PRC has to, go ahead, Martin.
Yes, sir. So I've spent a little time with Continental Divide. They've been really great and cooperative in this whole thing. They, it's a giant package that they have to put together and so they have to get a contractor involved that can't do the rate study themselves. They have to get a third party to suggest a rate to them. Then they present it to the PRC. The PRC on the state side has to get their engineers involved, look at the rates, rates around other utilities around the state, and then come back for public comment, all red tape, and then eventually gets approved. So the process from start to finish, from Continental Divide hiring a, a third party should take anywhere from 90 to 120 days, depending on if there's public comment for handup. Eventually, we would like to start seeing the master plan fulfilled where all of the lights will transition from sodium vapor and whatever else is out there to, to LEDs. We have 250, of the 250 watt bulbs, we have 111 of the 400 watt bulbs, we have 481, and then 80 of the smaller lights. So eventually, what we'll like to see is a modernization of the lighting and a reduced energy cost as well as savings to the taxpayers monthly bill.
And that will come, that's why Continental Divide is freaking out. Okay, what I'd like to see done, offset it, as we go through this and we start saving big bucks on these lights, because we're going to, we need to replace more of them with the savings. And it'll offset and it'll light our town up and it'll light our town up until every single light in this town is an LED. The cost will offset, so why not? Okay? I mean, we're talking about, I don't know, I signed a check to Continental Divide for $56,000, $57,000 every month.
It should go down.
Yeah, it'll go down like $25,000, $26,000. So I'd like to see that, that we save be reinvested into the light.
Is the climate light doing any type of layouts for us as to how our streets are going to be lit up with the audities?
Absolutely. So GE provides a cost-free lighting study for nationally-approved roadways.
Is that something that we can see? Can we see that?
Absolutely.
Layout?
Yes. And so it'll, because we're matching the lumens for the existing lighting, pretty much we're just doing the same thing that's already there, matching the lumens. So it's, but it is there.
What about the, like, the color?
Yes, so the color is a very good point. For those of you that are familiar with the LED lighting, there is a wide range of, of lighting color differences. So you have warmer lights or cooler lights. The light that Continental Divide has chosen is a 3000K color, which is a little bit warmer. It's not like the intense blue light, it's more of a lighter light. So in between the yellow and the intense blue LEDs, it's kind of a happy medium. And you had mentioned...
A lot of cities are going to 4000. I don't know if you know that, because they want the white light and not the blue light and not the...
The white, bright light.
Just to light up their town so when people come through, they, they see their city and, you know, our city is, we want to show it off.
Very good.
Is the economy a daylight light?
Sure.
It's a daylight light. So, and that's what Balsam is going to, because of its brightness? And you have no dark spots on that or any shadows?
Very good.
So is that something that they can propose also, maybe you can add a 4000?
A 4000? Definitely. I will bring that up to 4000. And that's something we've talked about also. There's a 3000, the 3500, and the 4000 option.
Yeah, and show us the layouts for 3000 and 4000, that we can see that.
Before we approve this, maybe...
So I know that they do have a light, one of their LED lights on display in their parking lot. So I've checked that one and there's a few others on Balsam. So, but yeah, maybe, maybe we get one that's a 4000K, one that's a 3000K and show them side by side and see.
Yeah, then you have to also get with the, the type of distribution you want, you know, on the street.
That's right.
Do you want it to just show the street? Or do you want to show the street down the sidewalks in some areas, you know, so people, you know, to walk into the street?
And that's where GE comes in and does their lighting study for us. So they, they show us what we can expect. And you had mentioned rebates also. Rebates roll out to about $100 per light. And it's, it's a little bit less, but give or take about $100.
Rick? I'll entertain a motion to spend Lodger's tax money.
So we're only talking about the 14,000?
14,000, yes, ma'am.
Rest of the chunk is not?
The rest of it, we leave off, we'll get to that at another point in time after the PRC has done their deal.
Mark, can you explain to the public what the PRC needs?
The Public Regulatory Commission, yes. Okay, so they, they are in charge of setting the, the rates for all utility. So people can't just make adjustments to their rates on what they feel like. There's a state procedure and so every utility has to go through the PRC to set those rates.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Motion.
Make a motion to accept the...
I've got a question, one more question.
Go ahead.
On Walmart, the light and walkway you're talking about, there is a walkway.
That's, that's great. We're going to get the lights in and then when the PRC approves this, we're in the sidewalk, baby. We can't pour concrete now, anyway.
Right. So, I don't know, is it, you want to put the lights before the concrete?
Yes, yes. Let's get the lights in. We need to spend the money, because if we don't, the Lodger's tax is going to get our butt because we didn't spend the money that they gave us. And they're going to take it back and they're not going to give us money for lights next year. And that's what everybody in that volunteer group that gets money from the Lodger's tax needs to remember, you spend that money every year, you ain't going to get it back. And that's what this is about, spending the Lodger's tax money, we can get more next year.
So the, the two poles that are going to be going in, the two new poles, you're not going to put them someplace for your...
Where the sidewalks can go.
You're not going to do that, are you?
No, no, we're not. Now, anything else?
So there's eight poles all together?
There's six currently and we're adding two more.
Did you do a layout to show that street?
Exactly, and I worked with the engineers from CDC to get that layout, yes.
And there's no, like, dark spots in between?
There's very small, there's minimal gaps in the lighting. And so we're, we're working with the owners of the, I forget the company's name, but they have some structures that are close to our easement. We're asking them to pull that back. There's some concrete barriers that are along the way. We're going to remove those, put some candlesticks and kind of modernize that area, clean it up.
I was talking about the shadows.
Yeah.
And I helped the police department, too.
Oh, well, I have people walking from that way from the uptown.
Yeah, they are.
Okay, I'm, I'm good.
Now, you made a motion.
I made a motion.
Second.
My second.
Uncle Reynolds?
Yes.
Uncle Vasquez?
Yes.
Uncle Usterro?
Yes.
Dispatch for the JPA. Okay, Chief, I got a question for you, you can go on this. Number nine. I have a copy in front of me, so I'm not sure what you're going to do on. What was number nine saying? That was 18. You want to use mine?
No.
Right here. Okay, 25% gross street tax. And we get over here and it says, after the first year, the first year's over. So all of this is out, right?
I will let the city manager, did Kate talk to you about the percentages?
She, these were the...
But it says, after the first year, the first year's over.
I know.
So then, what are we, what are we doing here? The first year's over.
Mayor, I...
All these percentages and stuff, they don't fly no more if something happens.
Mayor, I hadn't...
Was, was the advisory committee even involved?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. Our, our board was not involved.
So why don't we table this and send it back to your board and you guys take it to the county and see what the hell's going on.
Mayor, that sounds like a great idea.
Good idea. Chief, are you good with that? Because like I said, that stuff just, it doesn't make any sense.
It didn't make any sense to me when Kate put your bar up today, but she said her attorneys insisted. I said, ma'am, you do what you like to do.
No, her attorneys...
Okay.
The attorneys can't assist in anything.
Mayor, you were in, you were in the office, I was.
So that would be my move, guys. I would say that we table this, let it go back to the chief and our other chief and their little board and then then work this out, get it back to the county, back to the village with all the fixed numbers, because if something happens that the tax doesn't cover what we needed to cover, we're going to have to pick up.
And I, and I made the, the assertion that to take the percentages out and just go back and hash it out.
Yes, exactly.
Because our board, the chairman, I insist that we will stay under the cap.
Exactly.
And that's what we agreed on, exactly.
Exactly. So let's just, I, let's make a motion to table this, if you guys are good with it?
I'm good with it.
Okay, and let's just table this and you guys go back, hash it out, bring it back and we'll prove it.
I, Mayor.
The way that, the way that it should be.
I agree.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to table this JPA dispatch deal.
Make the motion to table the JPA, or to the President?
Second.
My second.
Yes. Manny, Rick?
Yes.
Rick?
And Mayor, I'm...
Thank you, Chief. What else do you have?
On a side note, going into the LEDs, just how much you're going to save money. In 2016, I converted both stations. I'm seeing a 25% reduction in station two and a 17% reduction in station one.
Now, that's what we're talking about, baby. Thank you, Chief. Okay, we tabled number six, on to number seven.
So in your packet, you have a request to approve a purchase for sodium hypochloride, which is the chemical for the wastewater treatment plant. This is a year's worth of chemical, or is anticipated to be a year's worth.
And it went up by a little bit. I don't know exactly what it was, but it did go up by a little bit. I think it was $4,000, $5,000.
This way, we don't have to come back every time we need...
Every quarter.
Chemical, they're ready to go.
And get you up for more. Any questions on that? Hypochloride, don't fall in that stuff. I'll entertain a motion to purchase the hypochloride for picking $9,000.
I motion to, to accept the, also the hypochloride for $59,000.
Second.
Second.
Uncle Reynolds?
Yes.
Uncle Vasquez?
Yes.
Uncle Paliya?
Yes.
Cool. Main Street contract the services.
With the annual budget, the city council recommended we're being made grants name street $35,000. So we needed to establish a contract going forwards for that amount of money and scope of work. I put together a contract, I would consider the meat of the scope of work is on page two on the things that I recommend that we ask for our services. I know the Main Street Board had a question they presented to me today that they wanted a little bit more clarification on G, which G says work with, work with other community and business partners to improve the facade at least one old dilapidated building for an owner in need downtown. The reason I put that is I personally have felt that in the facade work that we've done in the last couple of years, most of the buildings that we did, I felt like really didn't need it as much as some others. And so I didn't think we had as great an impact.[1580.82] So, when I say, uh, an old dilapidated building, uh, one that the paint's chipping off, or the stucco's chipping off, uh, that looks bad, and just painting it, and I, I was told at one time, well, the reason we pick a better building is because we don't have that much money, but realistically, some of those old buildings, just a coat of paint would make a world of difference. And so, that's what I'm thinking, and I put an owner in need, meaning, um, that's hard, that's kind of a judgment call, but it needs, it needs to be an owner that we anticipate could not afford to do that on their own. Um, if they're an attorney, I would assume they could afford to paint their building on their own, and maybe that's a poor assumption, but, but, um...
I agree.
Yeah, that might be a good assumption, but, um, you know, and I don't know that we can make that call, but I would hope that we would choose a needy business, that it's not gonna happen if we don't do it, or somebody else steps in. So that was my call, and I don't know if they have other questions.
William, you and your board are here. You guys wanna stand up and ask any questions? You got anything for us?
I have too much.
So, in the past, I felt like many of our contracts had a lot of, uh, fluffy language, that will cooperate, will partner, things that, how do you measure that? Um, and so I tried to put some stuff in there that I felt like we could say, okay, that happened. But I didn't want to add down too much, but something more substantial or tangible, that we could see.
And as far as the projects, you guys are doing the Better State Project, it's beautiful, okay? The scope of the best thing was outstanding, it's been outstanding three years in a row. The kids seem to love it. I don't know what else you guys are planning on doing, but those two right there make my day a bunch, okay?
We've got a lot more in store, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, Council, and Lady Manager for how to let me speak. I'd just like to make a comment that I think we have a pretty good idea as far as a in-need building. Uh, the second time around, their storage building, I think that's exactly what you're on to. It's, uh, stucco's peeling, it needs a good paint job. There's more to it than just that, though, the foundation, I don't know if you ever noticed this, like that. So, um, there's a bit of a judgment call as whether or not we proceed. If we do the work on it and resurface it, is it just gonna be for not, if they need to end up re, uh, doing the foundation? So I think, what my next course of action will be is to ask New Mexico Main Street to come, use all our service requests to assess that building, and then from there, see what we can do if, if it's worth doing that facade squad there, if we can look elsewhere for that project.
And the issue they have as well is they have to get permission from the owner, and that's sometimes the hardest to contact the owner.
Are you guys, is your board, have you guys seen this contract?
Yes.
You guys are good with that?
Uh-huh.
You got anything else, William?
No, sir.
You guys got any questions for the Main Street?
No, my only one was to see if they, they liked this agreement.
Yeah. If you guys are good with it?
Yes, sir.
I want to entertain a motion if you guys don't have any questions for the board.
I, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, I know that you guys are only getting thirty-five thousand dollars, okay?
That's right.
I would like to see an increase of money to the Main Street, if they're gonna do more, more things. And they may have been put up to do more things, and in the four-point approach, uh, for that, I would like to see them get a little more money.
What, what is extra that they haven't already been asked to do in prior years? It's just, I just took it out of the four-point approach, because the four-point approach personally for me was really hard to pick out, what are they, what am I asking them to do? So I took out all the fluffy language.
It's all the language was taken out, huh? We didn't change anything.
That, we're gonna cooperate, we're gonna partner, we're gonna, all this stuff, and trying to list, we're gonna fix one facade, we are gonna hold two community events.
So, let me, okay, let me ask you this. We're gonna fix these facades, and who's gonna furnish the money for them?
Well, they've done facade every year, and that was already in their plan, right? We've never had that in our contract, that's something they've done. Typically, they get the paint donated, I think Mr. Windhorse has already got the paint, right, Chris?
Yes.
We've had tons of paint donated, typically, we're expecting a paint job.
We've got, um, two pallets.
And the volunteers do it.
So if I can make a comment on the paint, then that has been donated. Um, I went and inventoried the entire hoopla of paint that was there. A majority of it is used for like, uh, sightings, it's a lot of semi-gloss as far as shininess, and not only that, but a lot is for interior jobs, and we work with exterior jobs mainly. Um, so I would say maybe ten to fifteen percent of it is exterior paint. So, while we can use that paint, definitely.
So you're saying only fifty percent of two pallets is exterior paint?
Yes, sir.
So we'll see if we can exchange that.
Exchange the interior or exterior? We, I guess we, yeah, uh, wasn't something I thought about, but...
See if Walmart, somebody, or whatever kind of paint that is, see if they'll exchange it for us.
We can see.
Okay.
I come from a paint background, I've worked at Home Depot for two months, and usually, and this is Home Depot, I mean Diamond G's different, they're family-owned, but generally, uh, paint exchanges, I mean, if you're, if it's already mixed with color, it's, they're not likely to take it back.
Why, yes, why, it's white, it's white, it's white.
And then more, I mean, Chris?
Step up to the mic, girl.
A lot of that, a lot of that paint was old paint from APS, from Farmington Schools, so a lot of those, pardon me, a lot of those five gallon tin, or cans, only had two gallons of paint in.
Okay.
So it's not really something I think that can be exchanged.
Okay, don't worry, thank you.
And the other thing is, I wanna make a point on the paint, is if the paint's been sitting outside, it's frozen, you might as well throw it away.
That's right.
Okay, no sense in using it, because you're gonna do the job two or three times. So the best thing is to start with new fresh paint, see if we can delete it, and all at one time, whether it's acrylic enamel, or... You know the paint.
Right, right.
For last, the longest on the outside. Because once you start mixing paints, it's gonna, it's gonna fall apart, because the chemicals are completely different people.
Okay, that's...
So there's really nothing new in this contract.
We added paint.
That they've already been doing.
So can, can you ask Main, uh, Main Street and San Faye to maybe put a grant, a matching grant, to buy, to buy more paint, or supply for stuff like that?
Are you saying is there a grant available, or are you...
Is there?
I'm sure there's grants somewhere, Manny, but we're here to approve the contract, not talking about...
Yeah, there's community grants available through different corporations.
Okay.
Uh, Main Street organization itself, like New Mexico Main Street, they don't usually, they generally match funds for infrastructure and, um, capacity building projects, so that is redoing roads, or drastically changing something inside the city. So, way where we get our funds is through community grants and fundraising. Um, and luckily, we've been fortunate enough to raise some funds, uh, but there is definitely a lot more needed for these projects. There's, it's, a little bit of paint does go a long way, but sometimes it's more than just a little bit of paint, so...
Don't sweat it, she'll get your paint.
That's fine.
Don't worry.
Motion to approve the contract.
I make a motion to approve the Main Street.
Second.
Second.
Council Paliya?
Yes.
Council Lucero?
Yes.
Council Vasquez?
Yes.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Asset management plan for water and wastewater treatment systems.
Mayor, Council, Miss Manager, or Lady Manager, I guess, I can... Asset management week.
To the board, let's just get it out here, huh? Come on, man.
Asset management plan for water and wastewater systems, uh, two reasons. Uh, funding, a lot of the funding agencies are requiring an asset management plan now. Uh, it was number three, or number, or number four on the recent ICIP that you guys approved a couple months ago. Uh, and, I mean, bottom line is, we're dependent on Jacobs employees to identify our aging infrastructure, and, and asset management plan will also, will give us a plan, a living document that we'll know the, uh, how old the pipes are, what kind of pipe it is. You know, we may be able to almost pinpoint where the next break is, but I don't wanna say that, because that's going a little too far probably. But anyway, we, we're needing an asset...
I'll go there with you. Okay, all you gotta do is go to where the last break was, that's where the next one's gonna be.
Pretty much, a little bit down the line, yeah. So anyway, uh, we're going somewhere with this, but we really need an asset management plan. Uh, it's, it's something we needed for years and years. Uh, this will give us some good direction in the future, where, where we need a pinpoint, there's certain areas that are older than others. I mean, right now, like I said, we're just, uh, we're calling Edward and saying, hey, do you remember where this pipe broke? You know, and that's, I mean, that's just the reality of it. But if we have a plan, it'll be a living document that we could, uh, tie work orders to. We can go back to it and say, hey, we had this same problem six months ago, and they fixed it, why did it break again, you know? I mean, it's really, it's an accountability document. We need to be smarter with our money, and it just gives us a short-term and a long-term plan.
Do we have a date, Donald, they're gonna require at the state level for future funding? Do you know when that takes effect?
Actually, the Water Trust Board, uh, they're the first agency to really require it, and they're just requiring that it's in the process, there's no real, no deadline date. So say, say we didn't do it this year, we just started it, the next year we would have to update them on where we're at.
So we kinda have to show we're moving in that direction.
Correct, yeah. But in this case, where we're going, uh, uh, because we have another thing in the next meeting with USDA, this kinda ties into it, so that's where we're going with it also. So anyway, uh, it's my recommendation, oh, we, I, we received two bids, one from Smith Engineering, our on-call engineers, and one from Wilson, and, uh, my request is that we record it to Wilson and Company for sixty-five thousand four hundred dollars.
Now, Smith Engineering quote came to sixty-five four hundred, Wilson's came to sixty-four ninety-four.
Correct.
So you're recommending sixty-four ninety-four to Wilson and Company?
Six, uh, oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, yes. No, that's the way you...
Do you wanna tell them why you recommended Wilson, you're thinking of that?
Uh, all the way to the USDA, or...
While you're sharing of their expertise in this area, and...
Yeah, well, I mean, with Wilson and Company, they've, they've been around a while, and, uh, they, they are familiar with our aging infrastructure. That's, uh, one of the reasons, another reason is we're going for a long-term plan in, in addressing the aging infrastructure. I mean, because we're not, you know, we can't do this overnight, we can't do this even within five years. And we all know that our, it's no secret in town that our pipes are damn old, wastewater and water, so it's, it's gonna take years to address this. And this, uh, Wilson and Company is assisting us currently with a long-term plan with the USDA, and this ties right into that. Questions?
Any other questions?
So how does the, the long-term plan work on a yearly basis? So what, what's happening in the next four years?
Uh, well, if we have an asset management plan, uh, say in six months, this asset management plan is complete, then we have a living document that's in front of us. If we have a pipeline break, we go to the plan, we identify it, we don't have to dig it to find out what kind of pipe, or that kind of stuff, we'll have that different. Now, Jacobs people, they've been doing it for years, so they have it up here.
Right.
But in a lot of cases, we don't have my paper. Right.
They've never made a map.
I think the way it'll work too is that it'll help us identify our older infrastructure, and kinda say, okay, we know this is the oldest pipelines, this is the oldest whatever we're looking at.
This is the oldest valve.
So, what's our timeline, what are we gonna work on the first year? When are we gonna repair the second year? So that we kinda have a plan, that we don't wait until it falls all apart, and then we go, holy gee, we need to fix that, so...
Oh, then they're gonna fix it again tomorrow.
Right.
And the next day, three G, blah, and the next day...
Say, say there's a major break on Sage, and, uh, we recognize that the, the entire street is old pipe, and we know it's gonna keep on happening, then we just replace the whole thing. And we go to the plan, and we update it with the new pipe. Uh, and, uh, the old stuff, we could identify how critical it is. So I think that's important, because our aging infrastructure, I mean, well, how old are some of our pipes, are fifty, sixty years old?
Well, that's kinda what I was getting at, because, uh, you know, if our pipes need to be replaced, or our streets need to be replaced as well, so, you know, if we're gonna replace a, a street of piping, then maybe it's time to win the paper, you know?
Yeah, exactly. Uh, there, there's multiple ways this plan will help us. It'll help me with, with getting funding, because they all ask for this type of information now. It'll help public works with, uh, updating it, and know, you know, where, where things are happening, and, uh, look back one year later, and hey, you know, I mean, there's multiple ways we can use this plan.
So even creating a maintenance schedule for our roads, so let's say we pave them, well, in three years, we gotta go back and seal this. And those kinda things, so that we get a maintenance schedule for everything that we have, to keep it lasting as long as possible.
Yeah, th- this plan is only for water and wastewater, it's because those particular funding agencies now are requiring an asset management plan. Like DOT, those types of funding, it's not there yet, but I'm pretty sure, assuming it will be there. It's just, I mean, it's, it's smart for the government to make the government accountable, and this base, this basically is it, so...
It's gonna show you, like, you're gonna pave a street, you pave the street, next year you're gonna dig it up, foot pipes?
No, we're gonna pave, take the pipes up.
We paved it cheap, baby. And then next year, you're gonna dig up the pipes, you know? You're gonna have Mario here, when you dig it out, and you come make, make your plan and stuff like that?
Well, th- this plan will be done within six months, so we're gonna find out all that information within the next six months. In six months, we'll know where our critical pipe issues are at, or it's not so critical, but I mean, almost seventy-five percent of town is critical.
That's a buzz, it's happened before, you know, they pave a street, three months later, you're gonna go dig it up.
I think most of the piping that we have now is, is, is as best as piping old stuff. And that's real brutal, once you start cutting it, or...
You just need to leave that shit in the ground too. Don't mess with it, because then you pull it out, it costs a whole, 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 whole bunch of them. Leave it alone. Any other questions? I'm gonna take a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Vasquez?
Yes.
Council Lucero?
Yes.
Council Paliya? Cool, thank you. Now we got a resolution for well number three, Water Trust Board funding. Uh, remember this, does require a fifteen percent match.
So, the well number three is, was number one on the ICIP. I know I keep on mentioning that, but we have it for a reason, that way we know our priorities. Uh, well, number three was number one, and we are going to the Water Trust Board for funding. Uh, depending on where you're at, it was, uh, it could be eighty, twenty, seventy, thirty, sixty, forty, it depends, I think we'll probably be on the higher end of a grant. So, uh, anyway, the amount is one million eight hundred and eight, gosh, one million eight hundred and forty-six thousand two hundred and ninety-eight and thirteen cents. That's a lot of numbers.
That's with our match.
That's, uh, with the match, yes.
The match, yes.
But we recently had a, had to do a di, is it a dialysis? No, it's not a dialysis. What's that D, what's a DAR?
Uh, Design Analysis Report.
Report, yeah, okay, that report.
Analysis.
Mike, you have to have a dialysis. I get mixed up with all these articles. Anyway, we had to pay for it, but it cost us fifteen thousand, but that fifteen thousand could be part of our match. So any expenses that we have now, once we're approved, uh, then those expenses could go toward the match, yeah.
Okay, let's go towards the match, right?
Yeah, and well, we all know the criticality of well number three, it's, it's...
Questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty eighteen sixteen dash fifteen.
For, to approve Resolution twenty eighteen dash sixteen fifteen, for the Water Trust funding.
Second. Council Paliya?
Yes.
Council Lucero? Council Vasquez? Council Reynolds? Next one, Water Trust Board funding for Jefferson, Washington, our flooding project down there, around Futures Foundations of Mason View.
Yes, so Smith Engineering is assisting us on, with well number three. Wilson and Company is assisting us with the Jefferson, Washington Drainage Improvement Project. So with the current funding, we are going to complete Phase One. However, we, uh, there is a Phase Two to this project, possibly a Phase Three, but we have no funding for Phase Three, and this is just requesting Water Trust Board funding for the design of Phase Two, uh, which will be, uh, Washington Street, because Phase One is going to be, uh, uh, new road drainage improvements along, uh, Jefferson Street, along with the pond.
That's your open government office, Smith.
Correct.
Questions? Mr. Paliya? Mr. Lucero? Manny?
Manny.
Sidney? I'll entertain a motion for Resolution twenty eighteen sixteen sixteen, Water Trust Board funding for Jefferson, Washington.
Yeah, I make a motion to accept the Resolution twenty eighteen sixteen sixteen.
Second. Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Vasquez? Council Lucero?
Yes.
Council Paliya?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution, tap funding for Second Street.
Oh.
Yeah, don't be going away yet, man. What's up?
I forgot you guys, uh, cancelled that one item, so I thought I had it right between.
Try to get out of here, see a ballgame, man, you can slow me down.
Okay, alright. So, which one are we? Before I tell you, you get these projects, man, they all muddled in your head. So anyway, this is for the shared path, path loop, uh, we have the Second Street channel improvement project. It's a drainage, overall, it's a drainage improvement project. We just happen to tie, uh, a shared loop, uh, around the high school up, up on top by the old jail, that comes down Washington, just as a amenity to the, related to the project. And this is, uh, going after funding for that particular aspect of the project.
That is Resolution twenty eighteen sixteen seventeen. Go ahead.
Question, what is this shared used path, what's the path, shared used path loop? What's the path gonna be made of?
Uh, there will be parts that'll be sidewalk, and then other parts, like on top of the hill, uh, may just be dirt, some, possibly some blacktop, uh, areas. And it's just a path, like, kinda like the Riverwalk, uh, project that we're going from the amphitheater to Harrison Street. So it's just a shared, it, it's a walking path, it's a bike path.
And it'll go around the high school.
And, and it'll go right through the, uh, on Second Street, where the Linear Park, the path will go right through the Linear Park, in front of the high school.
Wind through like this, through all the trees.
That's also, right in that area, you're gonna have flood control there.
Yeah, that's what it's all about.
Well, the, the overall project is a drainage improvement, that's, that's the concrete channel.
The project is about drainage and water control, guys.
Doesn't have anything to do with Legacy?
No.
Not at all.
Just asking.
Does that have anything to do with Legacy Trail?
The Legacy Trail?
Yes. Yes.
Well, it'll tie in because right there, Washington and the Riverwalk, there's a close tie there.
But they won't actually touch each other until later, Sidney.
They won't touch?
Not yet. Eventually, but not right now.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion for resolution twenty eighteen sixteen seventeen.
I make a motion, resolution twenty eighteen dash sixteen seventeen on Second Street.
Second.
Second.
Council Paya?
Yes.
Council Woskis?
Yes.
Council Sidney Reynolds?
Yes.
You go. Harry, you wanna talk on this one? Resolution eighteen sixteen eighteen to rename Friendship Park to Veterans Memorial Park.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, council members, city manager, my name is Harry Garcia. Uh, I wanna talk about that more, that veteran memorial we have in the town on the west side there. Uh, I built that thing in two thousand and eight. And it was named, uh, they wanted to name it Friendship Park then, so, you know, I didn't have no push to do anything to change it, so it was left at that. And the mayor talked to me a while back and asked me if I thought it was a good idea to name it the Veterans Park, and I think it is.
And I'll tell you what, that came from Council Reynolds to me, just so you know, from one veteran right there to this veteran, to that veteran, okay?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, you know, I must, I might've jumped the gun a little bit, cause I had the Mexico Highway Department put signs on the interstate, both sides of the bridge, pointing it out that there is a veteran memorial park there. There's one by McDonald's also that points it out and when people show up to it.
It says Friendship Park.
It kinda looks like a memorial park. And another thing I'm trying to do is get a piece of artillery or some, uh, something to do with, uh, with the military to put it on that park and then it would look kinda awkward to have a piece of artillery and give it to Friendship Park.
And if, and my question, if, if there's some piece of, you know, military equipment?
It's coming.
You're not, are you going to take away? I, I, a source doesn't want the flowers to go.
No.
No flowers to go.
We're not gonna move the flowers, we're not gonna take out any of the tables that are there. As a matter of fact, I was looking at it today, I went down there and walked, just looked at it, yes. And I've got it to where it'll face like it's shooting at McDonald's, back towards the flags. Just a little ways on the other side of the table. It'll work great right there.
And you know what, uh, Mayor, council members, uh, you know, it's a park for all veterans. It's not my park, it's not nobody's park. It's just for all veterans and it's a good deal, you know, and, uh, if we can make it better and improve it, that, that's what we need to do. And you know, I'm just in here as a board of the name change.
Name change, okay.
And, uh, I really appreciate your time and, uh, you better not both know. And I am a, I am a United States Marine, Vietnam veteran, okay? So, hurrah.
Hurrah.
Thank you, Mayor, for letting me speak tonight.
You know, it was funny, cause when we first started this, we talked about Patriots Park, we talked about different names for it. And then Harry said, hey, we better go look at the signs we put up. So I went, I was headed to launch anywhere out of, uh, Petro, so I drove down the freeway and I said, huh? I guess we'll just call it better as Memorial Park.
Okay.
That way everybody don't have to change everything to do this.
And that's, Mayor, that's what I meant by maybe it's up the gun a little bit.
You're alright, Harry.
You know, but, uh.
It's a perfect name.
It is what it is right now.
Any questions for Harry about anything else?
No.
While we got him here, take a shot at him.
Yeah, Harry, can you help us at the school with the soccer field when you go to the?
Matter of fact, uh, I have a meeting with, uh, Chairwoman Heidi Armstrong of appropriation and we're working also on redoing the football field.
Yeah, cause that?
And the track.
Soccer field and a football field. I go to all the games and guys, you know, we need better soccer field. We've been working on it.
You know, and I, I do send appropriation in the house and, uh, we have a meeting with the superintendent on the twenty-sixth of November to discuss what we need to do to get money for this football field, cause it's gonna be over a million dollars also. And, uh, we have another meeting on the twenty-third of this month to see where we're at.
But what Fred's talking about on that soccer field, we cleaned a ditch along the back, okay? And it would be on the west side of the field. What we're looking at is if you look at that fence that we put up at Truman, around the basketball balls to keep it from going into the street, a fence like that, Harry, along that east side. To keep the ball in the park and out of that ditch where the water, the snakes, the mosquitoes and all that shit pile up back.
And, uh, and I'll hold on, one more thing, uh, be sure and get your Capitol Law request in, cause they're due in December, so.
We got you.
In December, it's gonna be around the corner, okay?
Good.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Congress.
Thanks, Harry.
Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to change the name of Friendship, Friendship Park to Veterans Memorial Park.
I make a motion to change the name, uh, Friendship Park to Veterans Memorial Park.
One veteran made the motion, there's a second veteran that seconded the motion.
Sure, second.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Woskis?
Yes.
Council DuCero?
Yes.
Council Paya?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor. Next one, tap funding opportunity for First Street, phase three. Now we're gonna finish that sucker, guys. We really are. It's coming, man.
Long time.
Sixteen years I've been on this council working on that, buddy.
Mayor, Council, so the, the DOT is having to call for projects, this is all part of the process, so we are going for some funding for phase three of First Street, of which you guys, I'm sure, are all familiar with.
Twenty eighteen sixteen nineteen tap funding. Any questions?
No.
Motion?
Make a motion for resolution twenty eighteen dash sixteen nineteen tap funding opportunity.
Second. Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Woskis?
Yes.
Council Paya?
Yes.
Next one, tap funding for Roosevelt Avenue.
I'd like to thank, uh, Mario and Wilson and Company for all of your effort to help make us aware of this funding and help us do these applications.
Very much appreciated.
You go, Mario.
Thank you.
Any questions on the Roosevelt Avenue one? I'll entertain a motion for twenty eighteen sixteen twenty-one, tap funding for Roosevelt Avenue.
I make a motion for twenty eighteen dash sixteen twenty-one.
Second.
Second.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Woskis?
Yes.
Council Paya?
Yes.
Enjoy your calendar.
Any comments, recommendations? Thirteen days, what more can I say? Thirteen days. Thirteen days, the library isn't gonna be open. Thirteen days, I can't go in to pay my water bill. Thirteen days, thirteen days.
Thirteen days, you can pay your water bill online. You'll have to, you'll have to go and check your water bill.
I like to go in and do a, get their dog, to like to see who's there. We, we say hi.
I think that the employees, what we pay them, the thirteen days is good.
We could pay them more, that's my scene.
Okay, then let's go ahead, I agree with you then, and let's give them Columbus Day too.
They have Columbus Day.
No, Columbus Day is moved to Thanksgiving before they get it.
Well, I think pay them more.
Well, we'll look at that as the next budget here. But I mean, they need time off with their families.
Yeah.
Period. And Thanksgiving and Christmas, Christmas Eve, Good Friday, those are days that are meant to be with.
Birthday.
Yes, they are. Sorry, that's all I did with my family my whole life. None of my kids are in prison or being stupid, so.
None of us had that opportunity.
Well, if we give our employees that opportunity, they'll have it. That's why we're giving them the days off.
But they're not my employees, remember?
They're our employees, all of us. Like I said, I'm willing to give them another day, I'm willing to give them Columbus Day and the two days to Thanksgiving.
And the wedding day.
You know? But I'll entertain a motion for the calendar.
I make a motion to approve the twenty nineteen city calendar.
Second.
Second.
Council Reynolds?
No.
Council Woskis?
Yes.
Council DuCero?
Yes.
Council Paya?
Yes.
Cool. Um, Dick and, Dick Griffith, application for the golf advisory board, anybody got a problem with him? Does that go?
No.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve Dick Griffith for advisory board for the golf.
Second.
Second.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Woskis?
Yes.
Council Paya?
Yes.
Senior Center Advisory, I do not want to butcher this last name, so I'm gonna try it, okay? Joan Klenowski. I think I got it right.
I'm shocked.
Okay? Um, for the senior advisory board. And that's my recommendation, any questions?
I make a motion to approve this personally.
Okay, second.
Second.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Woskis?
Yes.
Council Paya?
Yes.
Comments from the council? Council Reynolds?
Oh, of course. I heard recently, an hour ago, that the wifi is apparently working somewhat at the library. This is my, my thing. I'm still gonna be watching to make sure it's working perfectly, so, but that's moving on quite a bit. It's been out for quite a while.
Any else? Okay, Manny?
I wanna thank Donald for taking the time out to show me that everything that's happening around our town, with our water and our streets, explanation of the trail and the drainage. Um, I think you done an excellent job and I appreciate your time. Rick?
Yep.
That's it. Fred?
Yeah. Um, no, no, uh, do we have to do about that soon? We can do the drainage.
Um, it's on the list of projects to work on. Uh, we need to get it folk, so we just, uh, need to get it going. We need to get folk to feel seen.
That's all you got? Laura, you got anything? Terry, what you wanna say?
Uh, thank you, uh, here, Council. Like I talked to you at the park the other night, if, uh, I don't know how you're gonna fund the, the new stone we're gonna put up there, but I'm willing to pay for it or have it with you guys, whatever we need to do to get it done, that's what we're willing.
Hey, we'll let you pay for it, dude. I have no problem with that, eh? We'll, we'll go ahead and we'll get it. How big do you want?
Yeah, you know, whatever.
A little bigger than the Friendship one?
You know, it's gotta be nice and.
Yes.
Figure something out on.
I'll tell you what, why don't you just go ahead and take care of it, Harry? And you pick it out, you put it, you get it and we'll put it in there for you.
That'll work.
Okay?
If it're done.
And, and that'll be our half, we'll put it in, you get, get it, pay for the Viet, the Veterans Memorial Park. And make the stone however big, whatever color you want, to go with what we got there, with that pretty white marble, and we'll put it in.
Thank you.
And that makes it real simple, that just ended the whole thing, okay?
You could also let some other veterans know that you're seeking funds if you would like. Or not.
We got to do it right now.
Okay, I'm in.
No, you know, and, uh, you know, I put a lot, I put a lot into that memorial fifteen years ago, you know, and I don't want it to, uh, go away by no means and, you know, initiate it better.
I just don't wanna do labor. I'm already on a labor order.
Thank you, Harry.
Chief, you got anything?
Uh, you're, uh, Mr. Reynolds, no, I don't have anything.
You forgot.
Really? Thank you for, uh.
Reminding us.
Ah, thank you for our clarity.
Yeah, we've. I got your message.
We've got one more, yeah, we've got one more, uh, block party this, this coming Saturday, uh, the councilman, the, you, you gave them their flyers? Yes. And so, we're putting the ad in the paper, so we're gonna go big and then we're gonna